Can I start with one question, which actually Claudia brought this to my attention? This is a question for you, Sabrina. So on page seven, where it says, "Under building permit," Form-Based Code Article 8, "that within the Form-Based District there shall be no requirement for Architecture Review Board approval of a building permit."
And I think that that is an error, to be very honest with you, Bob.
That's an error?
Well, it's written that way, but I think it should be changed.
But the rest of the way it's written, it seems like the powered review is under the Development Review Committee, or whatever it's called.
Department of Development.
Right, and so there's a couple different thoughts out there. You know, the town would contract with an architect as kind of a designated staff person to help review the architectural aspects of applications, because architecture is the one discipline that we do not have as a dedicated staff in the office. So if we're not going to hire a consulting architect as a staff person, or in a form or another, then I think that the power should be given back to the ARB to review applications.
Well, you may want, the town may want to hire an architect to review submissions, to see if they're compliant on a technical and legal level with the spirit of the rules. But the Architecture Review Board, I think, wants to have a look from a professional, what's the right word, but just professional opinion and how, we're not going to be able to take every application, spend the time to go through thick packages and compare it to the book, obviously.
No, absolutely.
But we would like to have some part in this project, I think. For instance, the Chappaqua Crossing, we really had extremely limited involvement in that. I think it turned out very nice. It was really all the planning board. We really had very cursory interaction.
Well, and I think that kind of consensus of your board, that point is very important to make sure you carry forward. And the question is, your board is the only board that can really speak to the architectural detailing that the consultant team put into this code. Is the architectural detailing detailed enough, but general enough, to help applicants, to guide applicants, to give expectation of what the architecture should look like? And is that architecture palette, for lack of a better word, open enough, but exclusionary enough? And so that's kind of your folks' specialty. And so hearing from you on the architectural aspects of the code, which is the bulk of the latter half, is essential. And I think that if you have suggestions regarding processing the application, that's also very important. I will tell you, there will be changes to the way an application is processed. The draft speaks to the Development Department handling a majority of the processing of the application. There's going to be changes based on public comments, based on other board comments, to invoke the board and a public hearing in some form or another. And so that's as much as I know right now. I've been charged with trying to reshape that section of the code to try and outline a better process. So I would love to hear your opinions on that, knowing that you want to kind of have eyes on, at some point where you can have more say, as compared to Chappaqua Crossing, I think is important to know, and any other main point.
Okay, so then before we get into, I think, in terms of Gray Williams' letter, and I think what the town probably wants to hear, in terms of restricting it to certain architectural styles or not, and how that should be handled. I'm just curious what our group thinks, kind of overall, we need to divide this hour and be productive. But just in general of the project, do people support it, do people not support it, do people...
So, one thing I'd say related to your comment right there, Bob, I think that the two are related in terms of the backend and all the architectural details, and whether or not this board has a formal role in approving these projects. And what I mean by that is, I'm sure we all have plenty of thoughts about the architectural details on the backend, which we can talk about later on this call. But to some extent, as long as this board still has a role in approving projects within that zone, there's a little bit of wiggle room, and we don't need to put too fine a point on all of our collective comments about the architectural details. But if we want a more limited role and pass the buck on approving these projects to some other group, then perhaps we need to have a much more detailed conversation about the architectural style on the back half.
No, that's a good point. That's definitely a good point.
If I can jump in in regards to Gray Williams' letter, I strongly agree with a lot of his points. To exclude something modern, something new, something innovative is going to make this town irrelevant. I think it's going to, I mean, for me, I don't see how it would not start to look like a Disneyfication of Chappaqua. I mean, if you're going to have Queen Anne and Greek Revival and Federal-style copies, or maybe bad copies, I think the town's going to look silly. I think it's got to open up to other, more contemporary styles. Maybe contemporary style that's sympathetic to some of these styles, but to exclude it directly, I think is going to kill the town. And I think it's a really short-sighted, you know, a short-sighted section of the code to put in there and dictate what styles go in there. I mean, in fact, in the example on that section of the code, every example of a building they show in there is an old historic building. They don't show anything new. They don't show any modern interpretation of those styles. They're showing, I bet you 99, if not 100% of them, are actual historic Queen Anne, Tudor, Greek Revival buildings. And I work in New York City, and we're almost treating this like a landmark district. And even in New York City, LPC allows for, if there's a new building, it's going to be modern, but it's going to have some touches that relate to the historic buildings around it. They're not going to say, "Make a cast-iron building brand-new," but make it look like a cast-iron building. It's just silly to me.
How do you put standards on a modern design? So it doesn't end up being an economic, cheap, not very attractive, modern project? Is there a way to add some rules and some guidelines for a modern project without leaving it completely wide open?
Yeah, I mean, that's the danger. But also, telling somebody they have to put in cornices and curved headers and all sorts of other things, you're adding cost onto what could be just a brick building. And I understand that it's probably going to end up nicer than just a brick building, but it's going to have a lot more detail. I mean, I think there's got to be something written in there that, if you're going to do a modern contemporary building, that it has to have a certain amount of articulation and detail. And I'm not ready to say anything about that right now.
Yeah, I completely agree with you, Stanley. I think there can be stipulations about allowable materials and things that would definitely not be allowed. And they've got kind of coverage on windows and blank walls and things like that. But it's not an easy way to do like a blanket covering of any new building. And I think calling this a Form-Based Code is difficult. It's more of a zoning. And saying "Form-Based" and that it has to reflect some historical style or any particular style is somewhat problematic, I think, because it implies something that it doesn't necessarily have to be. And I've had this conversation in my office, too, about seaside Florida, and things just all looking the same, and you can choose the color siding you want. But I think there can be, to the question of how do you control it, you can, to some degree, by materials and amount of fenestration required, and kind of breaking up of materials and kind of general facade comments. But I don't think that there's a way to not review each project on its own.
How did these designations kind of originate? From what was it, from zoning or from your office, Sabrina? Or was it a recommendation from the architects?
Was there a desire to create like a QT village, and these were the way to implement it?
It was the consultant, the consultant team worked with the downtown working group, and they came up with kind of these standards. There was a huge discussion over contemporary. Contemporary was reserved for municipal buildings. And this was, the consultant felt that the architectural styling that was written into the Form-Based Code provided enough variation and breadth that it was really loosely interpreted within those genres, if you will. It was not, the categories of the architecture were recommendation of the consultant team. And there was a lot of discussion about creating a Disney-esque hamlet. And that's kind of, all of that discussion resulted in these architectural types.
I can't, as I said, I work in New York City. I can't tell you a new townhouse that's made to look like an old Greek Revival townhouse that was built. Nobody does that. And why should we?
The challenge is, how do you protect yourself? How does the town, how do we protect? So I'll put myself, I'm a developer, so I've been on both sides of the table, where economics govern, and you want to do something, and you want to be careful how much money you spend so something works. And it comes sometimes at the detriment to the architecture, especially in the small confined area like this. So that's why sometimes seaside's beautiful. I think those kinds of places can be fabulous, actually. But I mean, me personally, I'd be open to something contemporary if it was well done. And the question is, how do you create some sort of guidelines to make sure that you have legal protection, and someone doesn't say, "Well, that's not in the rules." You know, "I'm allowed to do this."
Well, I think that's what Sarah said, is it really has to be evaluated on an individual basis. And so the code needs to allow for that, which at this moment, it doesn't.
And Stanley, I mean, the way that they do the townhouses in New York City, right, it's not drawing on historical architecture, but there's a scale there, right, that reflects on other things that have been done. And it's kind of a modernization of historical things, not a copy.
Exactly. I mean, off the top of my head, if you look up, I think Rogers Marvel Architects, they did a whole series of really nice contemporary brownstones or townhouses in Brooklyn. And they vaguely look, they definitely look like townhouses. They've got the form, but they're a complete modern interpretation of them. And had they done a complete copy of a Greek Revival set of townhouses, I'd be really disappointed. And maybe it's not completely fair, because New York City's chock-full of old buildings. But at the same time, we've got a whole patina and a whole collection of different styles. Why are we stopping it at Art Deco? You know, it just seems you're going to just stop the town dead at Art Deco, and only 20% are Art Deco. If somebody, if a developer asked me to make an Art Deco building, I might have to leave. I don't do that. I might do a building that has Art Deco influences, but I'm not going to make an Art Deco building. And in each style that they wrote about, they were pretty specific about the window pattern, the door pattern, the stoop, the cornice, and things like that. So I think they're really, it's almost, if you look at the LPC rules and regulations, they kind of tell you what styles they are, but that's just to help you identify what those styles are and how to maybe bring your building back to it, because they've been bastardized over the years. But I don't think, there are no way telling you, you have to make a new building that looks like a federal townhouse or something like that.
Yeah, I think with the visuals included, you would get, that's what you would get. Whatever, just like Stanley had said, whatever picture of Queen Anne or whatever you had, that's the replica that you would get, essentially, what picture you included within the document. So it becomes, I mean, the picture becomes more important than the actual words, almost.
Yeah, and I give it back to the consultants, say, "Show me a new, brand-new building that's in the federal style." And this is, Claudia brought this point up to me, and it's her thing. "Show me a federal-style building that's five stories tall, that's brand-new." And I bet you they might not come up with anything.
Five stories is very tall for some of the narrow streets, you know.
Oh, so let me explain to you the five stories, because I think there's a lot of misrepresentation out there. The five stories exist on five parcels that are privately owned on either side of the Quaker Street Bridge on South Greeley Avenue. The remaining five-story buildings would occur on Town Hall property, okay? And the up-to-five stories on the Town Hall property. I think that's very important, because it is a limited area. And the five stories was documented based on topography and trying to create the center of the Chappaqua Hamlet at the train station, expanding the memorial park and creating a community around the train station that would bleed out onto South Greeley King Street. There are no other areas of five-story, other than coming off the Quaker Street Bridge and on the town-owned property. There is also an additional process that will need to be gone through by the community at large for that town property, because we can't just sell, I mean, the town board could just sell, but it's highly unlikely, and they've committed to such, that they will not sell that property without going through a referendum. And there would definitely be design charrettes and kind of everything that everyone has been talking about, about construction on town-owned land. And I think that's important to kind of put in your back pocket. But that's the only location that the code is promoting five stories. The rest is a three-story, and in some areas, four-story.
Where is the Town Hall offices going to be relocated to?
The Town Hall offices are where the Town Hall offices are.
I thought you just said that site was in play.
No, just property.
The property. There's no plans right now.
And not the building itself? Not the building itself?
No, the property, it's zoning. You know, somebody had said, "This is zoning. It's not a Form-Based Code." This is not a site development project. It is zoning. The town land right now is zone-planned industrial. It will become more flexible as regards to a potential future use under the Form-Based Code. But there are no plans right now, other than run up for the DG EIS to get a sense of maximum impact for the town land.
What do people think about building in the train station parking lot, which would have to be replaced with big structured parking garages? And probably that, I mean, somewhere I read something, are they going to be built with bonds? Is it going to be expensive to park? I mean, in most towns, when you build structured parking, it ends up being built with rab bonds, redevelopment area bonds, and there's cost to it. People have to pay to park. It gets expensive.
I don't mean to cut you off, Bob, but here's the thing. This is not a discussion about, "What do you think about building at the Town Hall property?" Unless you're going to turn it into, based on your purview as a board, what do you think of creating that type of space from an architectural perspective on the town property? Okay, I need to kind of keep you guys focused, to focus on the elements that your board is responsible for. You each may have your personal opinions about the project as a whole, or individually. But this is something that, as a board, given your purview under the Town Code, what are your feelings regarding, and it's very hard, it's very hard to take your personal opinion out of that. I'd like you to try and really focus on the board perspective of what's going on.
I think the board thinks of it as an overall project.
Well, I think if the intent is to have the train station and Town Hall be the heart of downtown and be the most dense, it's the opposite of that right now, right? That's the least dense area in town. So I think in that respect, it makes sense. And I believe that Mount Kisco has a plan to do something similar in the train station parking lot. I think if you're looking to increase foot traffic and have more of a population downtown, to me, it makes a lot of sense.
And the only thing I'd say on that issue, and this somewhat relates to this board's purview, right, is, I mean, massing is an architectural issue, at least on a given site. And I think, maybe it's an urban planning issue writ large, but massing is generally an aesthetic and architectural issue. And I think where the code could be clearer, right? And we keep hearing, "There's only five parcels that are going to be five stories." There are a lot of zoned areas in these maps that are zoned F5. And I realize that somewhere in the weeds, there's something that, there are other aspects of those parcels that, although they're zoned F5, means they cannot have a building up to five stories. But all of that, I think, could be made much clearer for the town folk to understand, right? Like, why are we calling these things F5 if there's no chance that there's going to be a five-story building there?
Is the parking lot behind, like between the stores and Bell, is that in play? The one that was rebuilt recently? I couldn't tell from the diagrams if that was involved.
It is being rezoned, yes.
Claudia, thoughts? You've been so quiet, holding back?
A little bit. No, I agree. First, I just wanted to talk about, because I think the goal was here to talk about the letter from the town historian and our reaction to it. And I think it's to some of the points, and I have to, again, reiterate the things that were said, mostly of the, and I agree with the letter, that the fact that we do not have a contemporary style is an aberration, in my opinion. Because under those rules, either Franklin Wright or Louis Kahn, who did the Temple Patel, wouldn't be allowed to even present a project in Chappaqua, downtown Chappaqua, which I think it's not appropriate. So I think there is, like Sarah kind of mentioned, there are some ways of conveying some sort of restrictions. And I know that Form-Based Code tries to provide, speed up the process of approval, et cetera, et cetera, by giving people some sort of cookie cutter guidelines. But, and it's true that for contemporary architecture, it's much more difficult. But there are some restrictions that can be applied, like scale, like a lot of those things that were already said before, that could preserve certain values, but they will have to be evaluated on the project base. So I agree with that. And I do think it has to be, and it should be allowed, in terms of the style. And other things that Mr. Williams talked were also scale. And again, I don't, I think, five stories, I find it a little bit excessive. Four stories, I think, in my opinion, should be the limit, even for downtown. And, I mean, then again, we are starting to talk about massing and about allowing. I think the urban design is not the most successful in our town. And I know that the plan tries to resolve it. But I think that should be more of a focus. I mean, in terms, I don't know, I have a lot of other ideas, but I don't know if we are supposed to, I try to follow your instructions, Sabrina, and stay within the architectural realm and not go over it.
I have to say, you guys are the first board that has the background, the skillset, and the purview to comment. Gray Williams' letter was fantastic, effective. It speaks loud and clearly to where his feelings are. Your professions are very much valuable to hear your comments. So you guys are doing a great job. And I will steer you when I feel I need to steer you, but so far, I'm hearing everything that you're saying loud and clear, and it's truly, truly helpful. So thank you.
Any standards I didn't see for the parking garages, which end up being mounted boxes for facades or treatment to the skins of them? Was there anything, Sabrina?
No, no.
They tend to be the biggest, and they're visible. And they can be nicely done. I've done nice precast garages. They can be nicely done.
There's restrictions on the locations of parking garages in the main commercial area. They have to be behind buildings. They can't be in the frontage. There really hasn't been any guidance when it comes to garages on town property. Again, this wasn't a town development plan.
Yeah, that was going to be my question, whether or not there are stipulations on having first-floor commercial everywhere and accessing.
On the maps that are in there, there are different plates of maps that have different colors. There is an orange line that depicts the required commercial first floor. That is currently under review, given COVID, right? And how deep that needs to be. You know, I've had a couple of property owners talk to me about, "Well, we're in this required area. What if I just wanted to have kiosks or storefronts in the first 15 feet, and then I use the entire back half for parking?" And so one of the fine-tuning for me is to really look at that parking line, can start parking, and you find that by looking at the TransAct maps.
Yeah, if you don't have deep ground floor retail, what are you getting out of this whole project? It seems like that's a goal, is to get some more activity.
Well, you also have to understand, the DG EIS is, that reality of that total build-out is unlikely. And all of you know, based on the work that you do, trying to get all of these property owners to sell to somebody is really unrealistic. And so we were forced by the environmental review law to show the most impactful condition. In all reality, parking is still an issue downtown. The properties just aren't big enough to park them, regardless how many stories you put on top, right? We were able to adjust the parking requirements in the code and reduce them based on today's car situation, the fact that you're in proximity to a train. But there's still parking requirements. And there's a lot of discussion right now about a share. How many parking spaces, if you provide a car share in your building or for your building, how many parking spaces can you reduce? There's nothing like that in this code right now, and that's something that we have been asked to look at. But a lot of the properties are not going to be able to take advantage of this code. They're just too small.
Does the town envision starting this project if they do something with the train station, which of course is very easy to develop if somebody wanted to, because it's big, you're smiling, big swaths of wide-open space? I mean, if the town wanted to advance this, it's very easy to do an RFP and say, "Here's a big parking lot. Who wants to build in it? Give me the best deal."
Because different town supervisors had different visions for that process, Bob. Okay, unfortunately, the town changes. And there's with that, different opinions about what should occur. We know that there are properties in downtown that, we know our zoning doesn't work. You know, there's a lot of talk about economic revitalization, creating grant programs to help people beautify the exterior of their buildings. The bottom line is, there's no feet on the street to support the local retailers, to the extent that they that they need to survive, right? If if you own your building and you have a business, it doesn't matter how many people walk in that door. If you're renting space and you're trying to, you know, create a business for yourself, you need people to walk in. There's not a lot of people walking in. With COVID, there's more people on the streets than ever before because people are walking. But it's still not enough to sustain. We lost a Dunkin'. I don't know of any location that has lost a Dunkin' Donuts. Okay? So so we are subject to the times. The comprehensive plan identified two categories of population, two demographics that the town is is losing. We're losing our young nation, not our youngest generation, but our, you know, our college don't have kids or have little kids that aren't in school yet. And we are losing our seniors. So one of the things in the comprehensive plan talked about is that we don't have a differentiation in housing. We have all single family homes. So rezoning, keeping those goals in mind, really looks at creating a more influx of town homes and apartments. Okay, the town land was included because it helps draw out the community picture. There are no plans right now for the town land, and you are 100% correct, Bob. Somebody the town could do something with it tomorrow if they wanted to. Nobody, after going through this process right now, I don't think anybody's going to touch that for another eight years, you know?
Interesting, because you look back at Reader's Digest. I looked at that site before it was sold and, you know, in that economy, developers were drooling to build empty nester housing there and the town wasn't no part of it. But I guess somehow that's changed.
Well, and 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 yeah, that is a site that has lived through fifteen years of board review. And there was also a call to try and expedite review for projects because fifteen years is a really long time. You know, and so the code looks at alternative processes to try and expedite. And when I say expedite, it's by no means streamlining or short cutting, but trying to be more efficient with a project review. The form based code was it was advised that the town undertake a form based code because it gives more expectation. This is what is expected. It gives the town an opportunity to say, this is what we are looking for. And if you are consistent with what we're looking for, we've amended our processes, we've done the environmental impact analysis. If you are within the thresholds that will come out of the environmental review process, your secret review is done, right? And so then it's just kind of all those other elements that we have to review. And and the the question really is, and I heard from you guys earlier in this conversation that you really want to roll, but you don't want the role so detailed where you're reviewing all of these applications and and matching them up with a code, but you want to say, right? And so, you know, wow, my job would be now to look at the code and say, and say, how can I influx your board's review? And and in my quick thinking, it's let's leave the building permit process the way it is today. You guys do a fantastic job when building permit applications come before you and you review them and have a say on them, right? The other side of that coin is the architectural detailing. And I heard a lot about contemporary, okay? Gray Williams spoke about contemporary. We need to add contemporary back there, back into the architectural detailing. But we need to be careful that we're not you know, making requirements that are going to run into cost issues for homeowners, you know? The the person, I'm not sure who said it about the brick building, you know, the plan versus not having cornices, you you know, or a building with cornices. Those are all really good. That's good information. The question is how to get them into the code, right? Because I think that for a long time, people have said, there is no architectural guidance in our code. You know, go ahead. Yeah, I don't want to. I don't want to keep talking, but go ahead.
Just to kind of go off that point, Sabrina. Did the, I I know this kind of this prescriptive architectural styles come from the work groups and the consultants, kind of the the Georgian, the Greek, the Italian, a tutor. Was there any other discussions or any alternative paths than just that? It seems like it's almost pigeonholed where you took a historic document. This is all the history of the Hudson Valley, and then you just kind of narrowed it down. You know, in a couple of meetings.
Though, though, well, and and I will tell you.
I mean, and and I, and and just like I said, I would not, I would rather it not be so prescriptive, but I don't know. I I don't know how to control or what language to use. And and I don't know if the consultants have done this before somewhere else.
Well, well, again, the consultants haven't walked away yet, right? Thank goodness, the feedback will be going them. But I will tell you, the 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 directive to the consultant team was to walk around, what's there now? Right? What's in the town now? What's in the hamlet now? Try and pull off of all of the detailing, the architectural styling that exists today in the hamlet, which a lot of it is the the historic and and kind of, it's everything that we see today here. And, you know, there wasn't a call for bringing in styles that weren't already here. So I don't know if that helps.
But why, why was that? Just because there's not that many new buildings in Chapakua, right? I mean, the Bank of America building, the the church near the Greeley Houses, a mid century modern church, believe it or not. You know, there are there are other examples that maybe they're not looking at. But my point is, you don't want to you don't want to lock a town in time, I think. Towns evolve, and in order to become relevant, they have to change. Building has to change. You know, Grand Central is not kept the way it was when it was built. It's it's been changed. Circulation has been changed. You know, it was done with sensitivity, but I think, you know, our town does too. We don't want to lock it in a certain aesthetic style, which is exactly what the the form based code reads to me now.
It is a great challenge to take contemporary styles and give it some, you know, you keep your arms around it so it doesn't end up being some horrible schlocky because a lot of them are, and a lot of the mid century architecture historically, there's a lot of good buildings, but there's a lot more that are horrible. You go to Park Avenue, you know, so, you know, how do you take, you know, look at Westport, look, take some of the nice towns that feel good. And 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 they do put, you know, real parameters on the style. So I'd be up for contemporary stuff too. I mean, I totally understand that school of thought.
You certainly couldn't say if they if they did go into town, looked at the styles that are existing. They couldn't say, I don't think they could say that the town is such a masterpiece using this.
The board, you know, the the consult group took the downtown working group on tours of Westport, of Ridgefield. You know, they did due diligence in looking at other places and trying to understand what it was they were looking at and trying to envision what they eventually wanted for the hamlet. Okay, so so that's where the the breadth of the styling came from. You know, it it from what I keep hearing, contemporary is the only styling that I think is is not there. You guys tell me if I am wrong.
Right.
Right? Because there's like, there's a whole, it did, the architectural speak in the document is like, you know, three quarters of that document.
Yeah, I think they did a good job on it, but they are missing contemporary, modern stuff. And I think my guess is they probably did because a lot of it isn't very attractive and
There was a big conversation.
Much more of, it's much more of a challenge to try to put a couple of sketches together and give guidance where it's much easier with historical styles, you know?
I think too, if the intent is to attract, you know, a younger population, you know, people in their early twenties without kids, you know, that might be an incentive to get them to come. And then they stay for, you know, the good schools, I think. You know, having having a walkable, shoppable community that you can move into at a certain age and not have to move out of once you have kids is a real, real draw.
Right. I I mean, and and that's that's kind of the that's the thinking behind it, you know, is is will we ever is the maximum impact of nine hundred and ninety seven units enough to sustain a commercial area that we have? It's not, right? That's still not enough people to do what we have. But the town was very specific about no loss of existing commercial space, number one. And number two, we wanted to try and get more feet on the street than we have now. But most importantly, we wanted a different housing type to attract the younger people who will eventually move into the single family homes, you know, who will who will start out as as younger folks in the community, they'll move into the single family home. The single family home will be vacated by somebody who will move down to the train station and not have to drive their car everywhere anymore. And, you know, so just the general patterning of people within the community. And right now, people have to leave the community if they're retiring because there's no, you know, there's no buildings with elevators here. You know, the there's there's no town, there's no apartments that are large enough that they want to move into that had that meet their needs. You know, and and young people, there's no place for them to to move into town unless they're lucky enough to find an accessory apartment, which is like a gatehouse on somebody's estate. Or they know somebody who has a house for rent that they're gonna or unless they want a single family home. And and a lot of times, they they do not have the bank accounts for that down payment where they could pay the monthly mortgage. They don't have the down payment, or they're struggling to pay the mortgage. And so the intention is that that the different housing type will be get different income requirements and will round out places for people to live in the community.
Right. I think everybody's is agrees with the intentions are are great. And we, I don't think anyone, I think it's a the intentions are great, and that's we all want for our town to have a vibrant town and to have the young people and the seniors living. So I don't think that's that it's it's how it is done. And also, especially, this is also an opportunity to create town and downtown. Yes, this this we should look at it as we are creating something. We are allowing to create a town for us. So, so as as you, you know, you we are very clear about the contemporary, allowing the contemporary style. I think that's one one of the things, but the the focus should be, I think that that cookie cutter perspective on those older styles is a little bit, it's it's restrict, I don't think basically that this is going to do what it's intending to do, meaning creating successful architecture, just by telling, for example, someone, put a dormer three three feet. You know, it's almost too specific. It's great for signage to be that specific because it's clear and uniform and homogeneous, but to giving this to create a multifamily structures, it's it it just may, you know, backfired.
So I'm thinking, I I'm thinking about what you guys are saying. And here's my challenge, right? Because because, you know, I believe you, right? I'm not gonna, I I don't not in a position to disagree with you, but try and accommodate what you're saying. And, you know, the the gentleman who was the primary drafter of this legislation had an architectural architectural background. Most of you have said that the detail in the historic architectural styles is too much, right? So i- is it a matter of, you know, just taking off some of those pages, right, to leaving it the general description, right, of defining it? And then taking off some of the detailing requirements and leaving it up to the applicant to design the building they want, i- i- you know, in keeping with that architecture. You know, I'm trying to think about how to rewrite this code to to address that, you know, because because I I I can, yeah, I believe you. I don't want to make it too cost prohibitive for folks. I don't want to end up with cookie cutter because that's not the intention. And and you're telling me that that's the intention. So but I'm thinking about how to provide enough guidance in the code regarding the way the building should look without, you know, making it too onerous and specific. Kind of like your, your.
Also, what, I mean, the the discussion of allowing the ARB to evaluate in the same way that we evaluate all the other permits that are coming through, how is that going to be a difficult ask? Is that, you know?
No, I I'm gonna tell you, no.
Because that's what make a huge difference.
If somebody buys a piece of property and they and they buy in and they they read this 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 code and they buy a piece of property and then they come with an application with certain facade treatment and architecture messing, how do you steer them? And you and you decide it's horrible, you don't like it, you know, if, you know, if there isn't enough direction, how do we have legal rights to say, you can't do that? You know, they'll say, but I can, you know?
Right. And right. Well, and and so that's that's the, that's the rub here, guys. You you know, that that's the challenge. And and if you're telling me it's too specific right now, at what point isn't, isn't it specific? Because, you know, the point here is to be more specific than we are today to allow more flexibility in 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 additional density to to create what we're looking to create. And and I don't know that line.
So pages, pages.
I was trying to get at Sabrina was the just that it it's almost like the consultants just kind of handed you something that said, hey, we've done this in the past. Here you go. Versus, I mean, have they done anything else anywhere?
Yeah, no.
That that actually still has teeth, but still allows for architectural design beyond just, I I want a Georgian facade with, you know, cornice detail and dentals and what have you.
Yeah, I think, I mean, six pages sixty seven to seventy five of the document, I think, do a a a good job of providing guidance and being somewhat specific without being prescriptive. So that's talking about massing and facade organization and, you know, base metal top and materials, I think, I mean, that those are some good guidance, but then you you should probably put some kind of caveat in the document that all designs are subject to review and approval by either if it's us or, you know, a screening party or something like that to get to us. But I think, you know, you can you can have rules on on massing, but you don't have to have style rules.
Right.
The danger is you get somebody who buys a piece of property and comes in and wants to do something. And and if you don't have some guidance or handcuffs to some extent, you may get stuck with something you don't like.
Yeah, you need, you still need the teeth to be able to come back and say, yes, this is what it should be.
The signage I thought was good, and maybe it'll help us because we haven't done what we've been talking about doing for so long. But I thought their examples of signage was was spot on. I liked it. And maybe that can you know, alleviate the fact, you know, for what we've been wanting to do.
Duncan stay. The sign.
Well, look at signage as an example.
Wait a minute, I heard that page sixty seven to seventy five is good too, as long as we have a caveat there. So we're not doing too bad.
Because these are general rules and they are some, they provide some guidelines, so, but.
Look at signs. People come into us and they want to do plastic or they want to do painted metal or something that is is not very beautiful. And and then they'll take a picture of the name. Well, I can what says I can't do this. And then we have no right to, you know, we encourage people to try to do cardboard signs and to do gooseneck indirect lighting, whatever. But it has no teeth. If people say no, then we lose.
Yeah, well, we're trying to give you some teeth here.
Yeah, no, that is the objective. It's you know, that's always a challenge where it's too tight or is it too loose? And, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I I think there's nothing that I have heard tonight from you guys that we can't address. You know, I don't think anything is a big big lift. You know, when it comes to what you guys have talked about, the real question is, is how to change it in the legislation to to address the points that you raise and address it where it's not too much, but it's a little bit more than there is today and to do that balancing.
Is there no, but just curious in this from you guys, because I expect that you guys, is there nobody else who really has concerns or isn't happy with building throughout the parking lot? I I happen to think, and I don't even I don't commute to New York anymore. I did for six years and now I drive to work. But I think that's. But I think that's one of the greatest amenities this town has is this endless sea of parking, which every couple of years they seek to push out and find room to build more spaces. And sometimes you go there and you're lucky to get in the last row, you know, and Corona, coronavirus will end and we will go back. And, and, and I think that is an enormous amenity. And of course, even in a surface parking lot, when you come home at night to get out of the parking lot, it takes twenty minutes. And if you're in a garage and, and you're paying for it a lot more because somebody's gonna have to pay for those garages. You know, I, I, I think that's a big amenity and draw for a commuter town. We are a big Beijing community, community town.
No, I, I completely agree with you, Bob, but I didn't want to go there about zoning in.
I certainly wouldn't want a, a structure like White Plains.
No, I personally wouldn't feel safe.
Yeah, look at Scarsdale, Scarsdale did some development, took years and built this giant ugly parking deck right at the train station.
We're not talking about that, guys.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Bob, I mean, that's separating the personal from the, I mean, I.
No, 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 but, but, no, I don't know if anybody's been involved in this. You know, just curious what people think.
Some of you submitted comments already? No, listen, everyone, everyone has, has an opportunity to comment on your feeling the town hall property or the town-owned property, the train station. That's not what's up here, you know, th- this is rezoning it. Rezoning it will, will help us seem a little bit more serious when we ask for economic development money to better the hamlet as a whole, not develop on town land, but when we make grants and they say, yeah, but you're zoned as industrial, you have a parking lot. You know, rezoning it will help us in other areas as a community. You know, so there's advantages to that. It is by no means a plan to develop that property.
Now, when it's zoned, you have to assume it's going to get developed.
Because right now we're zoned for two and three stories. Are we assuming that that's going to happen?
Where, in the town parking lot?
In, in the hamlet.
No, no, in the town parking lot.
I understand that.
Anything other than parking now?
Yeah, it's zoned for planned industrial. So you could have a bus company come in and want to park in the parking lot. You could have a, a, a solar farm, you could have a medical, a medical manufacturing, a soft medical manufacturing. You know, there's, there's approved uses in the planned industrial, but it's town land and nobody's approaching the town to do something like that. No, they approached the town, what?
I think that was one thing that, that Gray Williams, the historian, I, I thought in his comments, they were really thoughtful and there was some practicality to the, kind of like, this is not all going to get dumped as soon as you, you pass this and all of a sudden five-story buildings and thousands of kids and this and that. I mean, this is a thirty-year development plan.
Yes, yes, that is true.
I mean, there was some practicality to what he was saying within his comments.
But if the town fathers and mothers want to jumpstart this project, the parking lot is the easy way to do it because the land is just sitting there.
But they can't do that without speaking to the community. So, so you guys will all have opportunity to, to, to voice your objections if they decide to do something.
You'll hear objections, maybe not from us, but you know that the town will.
We're already hearing those objections.
I know.
I mean, no one anticipated that we would have the volume of, of response to this that we're having, you know, and, and again, I'm looking, I don't want to pass new legis- that doesn't, that's the same as the legislation we have in place today, okay? Last ten years that I've worked for the town, there has been literally no redevelopment of the hamlet. You know, and, and it would be nice to give the opportunity for, for people to, to invest in their properties in the downtown. Ninety-one Bedford is a wonderful building that took three years to, to get its approvals and it's zoning compliant. There's not one variance on that property. There's a problem with our processes and many people have come to my office and have told us, many professionals, many property owners, we will never, ever do anything in Chappaqua because of the time that it takes. Not worth the investment.
Uh, just a question about that. Was that approval process based because of the style, architectural style? Or why, what was it? So how is our, the, the, the form-based code would speed up by restricting the styles? So in other words, you understand my question?
Yeah, the, the styles are just part of the code, right? The processing, right, where it says the development department will review and you ask one of your first things, what is the A R B's role? That is streamlining, right? That was the consultant saying, you know, we're going to take out the planning board, we're going to take out the A R B, we're going to take out the E R B unless it's an extreme situation, we're going to take out the conservation board, we're going to responsibility to the licensed staff who review these applications for those boards. And we're going to expedite by doing the D G E I S and the F E I S. We are taking care of the environmental review for, for projects that would need to go through an environmental review.
I have to, I'm, I have to excuse myself. I don't want to cut you guys off, keep going, but I have to excuse myself, so.
I, I do too. I'm sorry, I'm a hard stopper.
Well, and we talked about it, so then let's kind of, and, and my question to you guys, do you feel that you've had enough conversation about this to meet with the town board to talk about those things that we've talked about tonight? Do you want to have more conversation as a board where I can come, I can meet you again? Kind of how do you want to handle that?
I think we need to meet amongst ourselves again.
Okay, okay. So.
I think we should have another meeting too. I'm happy to have Sabrina join or if you guys.
I think it was fine, fine with Sabrina. I think it, it, tonight gives us more things to kind of research and come back with before we go.
I think, yes.
Do we want to look for next Monday if that works for you, Sabrina?
If we do next Monday, if we could start at six-twenty, and, you know, then I could jump on right away. Otherwise you can start at six and I'll have to do the same routine of the phone call and then.
Does that work for everyone?
Six-twenty, can you guys do six-twenty?
Yep, that's fine with me.
Okay, great.
All right, let's do that.
Perfect, thank you guys. And, and thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you.